Per month. This evening, we're going to have a program that consists of two parts. First, you will hear brief presentations from the company explaining its its proposal. And you will also hear presentations from the Citizens Utility Ratepayer Board or Curb, and also from the Kansas Corporation Commission staff. Following those presentations, you will have an opportunity to ask questions about the application or the process, the rate case process. And then, after a brief break, we will open the formal comment period. And that's the time to make comments on the record for the commissioners to consider in this proceeding. So we will begin with our presentations. First, we will start with Mr. Darren Ives, Vice President of Regulatory Affairs for Evergy, and Ron Klot, Senior Director of Regulatory Affairs, also with Evergy.
Welcome, everybody. Welcome, everybody, to 2025 Evergy Kansas Central Public Hearing. We appreciate your participation here tonight and attendance. You know, the rate review process is a significant process as part of the company. And we're glad that you guys have taken an interest. And we look forward to the discussion that we're going to have with you tonight and look forward to hearing any testimony that's provided. Tonight, I'm here with Darren Ives, the Vice President of Regulatory Affairs. I'm Ron Klot, Senior Director in Regulatory Affairs. And we're here with our legal counsel, Glenda Kafer from Morris Lane. In addition, throughout the audience and in the lobby, we have other Evergy representatives that are here to assist you. If you have any additional questions about your account or if you're having any service issues, please take advantage of the opportunity to visit with them. If they need to pull up your account, they're they're here and available to do that. If you need to do that during the break or after the public hearing, we'll be available. First, just want to quickly talk about the jurisdiction that this rate review is covering. Our Evergy Kansas Central jurisdiction is one of four rate jurisdictions that we have under the Evergy umbrella. We have two in Missouri and two in Kansas. The Evergy Kansas Central is our largest footprint. It has about 735,000 customers. In addition, we're going to talk a little bit about the infrastructure investments that are part of this rate review. We have about 600,000 distribution poles. We have about 200,000 transformers that run throughout the service territory. In addition, this territory runs all the way up north to the Nebraska state line and south to the Oklahoma state line and over to the Kansas City metropolitan area, but it does not include the Kansas City metropolitan area. Brief discussion tonight about Evergy's core tenants. We have three of them that we continually have a balancing effort with those. Sustainability, reliability, and affordability. This rate review covers two of those core tenants, both reliability and affordability. Reliability is important to Evergy, and it's important to you. You know, nobody in here is appreciative of a rate increase. Customers aren't. We aren't either, but we are living in a cost-increasing environment. We're a utility. We use goods and services, and those costs are increasing. We create efficiencies where possible to try to offset those. As far as affordability, this slide looks at our regionally competitive rates. Over the past seven years, Evergy Kansas Central rates have increased about 7.2%. That's about 1% per year. Our regional peers around Kansas, they have increased approximately 18%. The Consumer Price Index has increased about 27%, almost four times what Evergy Kansas Central rates have increased. As such, we continuously have a balancing effort that we work on between affordability and reliability. So what are we requesting in this rate request? As Chairman Finch noted, our request that we made back in January was for $196 million, which was about 8.62% to our average customers across all classes. About half of that rate increase is related to infrastructure investment, with a significant piece to our distribution operations. The other half is on traditional ratemaking components that we've included on truing up operation and maintenance expenses and deciding what's the appropriate cost of capital that should be used to fund the investments that we have in our operations. So for the typical residential customer, the impact per month is about $13.05. The process that we go through on a rate review lasts about eight months. We make a filing in January. Intervenors such as the Kansas Corporation Commission, the Citizens Utility Ratepayer Board, and other intervenors examine the review that we have through a data request process and then provide their opinion on the rate review. It's finalized through a decision, and then ultimately rates will be changed in this case in September of this year. So just want to quickly talk about the significant portion of this case, which is reliability and the infrastructure challenges that we have. You know, I talked earlier about the distribution poles. We have about 600,000 across our network. And this slide shows where those distribution poles sit in their average life. About a quarter of the poles that we have out there have exceeded the average useful life of those poles of 45 years. Another one-third of those poles are in the 30- to 40-year range, which are approaching the 45-year mark. So as you can see, we have an aging infrastructure. And to the right on that slide, it shows, you know, what happens with poles that are being aging in our system. And the failure rate increases. That's known for many things that we have in life. But our equipment, as it ages, does have failure rate. And what happens when we have a failure rate? That can impact the service that we provide you. As such, we do a very wholesome look at our distribution system. We look at circuits that are worst performing. We look at the age across the system and where we the most beneficial investments we can make to improve the reliability throughout the system. Reliability is important to Evergy. You know, this slide provides a couple of examples that are included in this rate request. Here in Wichita, between Eastborough and Pawnee substations, we've made improvements to carry more electricity across those lines and increase that reliability to to the customers. In Topeka, we've increased, upgraded a power line with more durable materials so it can withstand storms at a much more efficient rate. So we don't have as many outages as we move forward. What we're trying to do is modernize the power grid, which improves reliability. And that, in turn, will enhance our customer service. This last slide, on our reliability metrics, we just want to point out that the investments that we made that are included in this case over the last four years have decreased our outage time by over 10%. It shows you that the investments that we are making are having an impact. And when you may see that these, the minutes here is not significant, but when you spread that across our entire jurisdiction, it is very meaningful to the customers that we have. So when I talked earlier about, you know, about half of this rate request deals with these investments in the distribution system. Finally, as I mentioned at the beginning, there are different ways that that you can connect with Evergy. Tonight, please use the opportunity. If you have questions about your account or have trouble with your service, please find one of us. In addition, there is an Evergy Connect Service Center here in Wichita. And it's open Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Please use that. In addition, we have, you can go out to the web and see more information and statistics about your account at evergy.com. And finally, once again, we just want to thank you for taking an interest in this process. And we appreciate the discussion that we'll have later on. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Klot. Our next speaker will be Mr. Joseph A. Strab, Consumer Counsel with the Citizens Utility Ratepayer Board, also known as Curb.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Joseph A. Strab, and I'm the Consumer Counsel for the Citizens Utility Ratepayer Board or Curb. I would like to echo Evergy's comments about thanking you all for taking the time and effort to be here tonight, both online and in person, to participate in this process. As you may or may not recognize, that this is becoming part of the official record from which the commission will review to make its decision on this application. So your input here is very important. And as the agency task of representing the interest of residential and small commercial ratifiers, I appreciate hearing from each and every one of you. So about Curb, we are a small government agency underneath of the governor's office, so an executive agency. And here we see the makeup of our employees. I have one attorney and three rate analysts who work underneath me. And we also have two administrative professionals who keep the office running and keep things getting filed. So part of our role is to represent rate payer interests at the Kansas Corporation Commission. But beyond that, we also have a presence in the Kansas legislature and Kansas pilot courts, both dealing with utility matters and orders from the commission that may be appealed up. And so we are functioning like a court system here, where we're a representative party and keeping tabs at all levels to make sure that there is sufficient, efficient service for all of us at a reasonable price. So I want to talk to you about the rate case process just generally. So we have an application filed, and parties help participate by contributing to the evidentiary record from which the commission will decide from. And so we see different types of parties here, including Curb and other intervenors. These parties come in with their own experts and arguments and filing positions in order to contribute to this record from which the commission can make an informed decision about how to proceed with important decisions, such as the one we're facing with the application. Just last week, intervening parties have been able to file direct testimony response to the company's application. Here on the screen, you see Curb's analysis and results and our recommendations regarding the treatment of the application. So we go through those, generally speaking, for $132 million increase compared to Evergy's initial request. That number is made up of a number of things, but relating to the cost or the interest it takes to take out loans and to loan out shares and to raise capital to do these types of investment projects. We're asking for a 9.5% interest return on equity. We'll discuss more of that issue tonight. And relevant to customers' bills is the customer charge. That is the fixed monthly charge you see on your bill just for being connected to an Evergy customer. We're requesting that these rates remain the same as they are today. And you see those rates there, listed on the on the slide. And finally, we provide a testimony regarding a new program Evergy is proposing, called the Stay Connected Program. This is designed to help income-eligible customers receive credits towards their bill to avoid disconnections and bad debt accrual on the company's expense. And so Curb has made a number of modifications and recommendations if the program is to move forward. So to conclude and move on to the next section of tonight's events, I'll leave you the Curb's contact information, both our email address and phone number. And so members of the public and anyone else is always welcome to our doors to call in, to ask questions, and to allow us to help you any way we can. So again, thank you all for being here tonight. We look forward to hearing from all of you.
Thank you, Mr. A. Strab. Our final presenter tonight is Mr. Patrick Hurley, and he represents the Kansas Corporation Commission staff.
Thank you, Chairman French. Good evening. We appreciate everybody coming out tonight. My name is Patrick Hurley, and I work for the Kansas Corporation Commission. As Chief Litigation Counsel, I represent the KCC staff. I'm here tonight to provide a high-level overview of the commission, how it operates, as well as explain how staff analyzed Evergy's rate increase application under the law and also provide important dates and other information. The commission is a state agency headed by three commissioners, and they are here tonight. Commissioners collectively act as a body in determining the matters before them. The current commissioners are Chair Andrew French, Commissioner Dwight Key, and Commissioner Keith. The commissioners are appointed by the governor, confirmed by the Kansas Senate, and serve staggered four-year terms. The commission has jurisdiction to oversee a number of industries that operate in Kansas, from electric, natural gas, and oil to telecommunications and motor carriers. The agency employs a staff of professionals who provide guidance and input on various technical issues related to these industries. Administrative hearings of the commission look similar to a trial you would see in state court. The commissioners act as judges and preside over the cases. They hear and weigh evidence. Witnesses testify and issue orders that can be appealed to higher courts. Evergy Kansas Central and Evergy Kansas South are the applicants and parties in this case. Commission staff are also a party in the case. Often, other entities called intervenors, representing a variety of interests, participate in the rate cases. Interveners develop and defend their own positions, recognizing that staff's duty is owed to the state of Kansas and the public. As represented by the slide, the various parties are separate and have distinct and different roles. The commission staff are dedicated state of Kansas employees that have a tremendous amount of education, professional knowledge, and advanced training in technical fields, such as accounting, economics, engineering, and complex financial analysis. As the staff's attorney in this proceeding, I will advocate for their expertise, neutral, and fact-focused analysis, and their opinion of whether Evergy's rate increase request is reasonable. During the proceedings before the commission, the staff's main goal is promoting the public interest of the state of Kansas as a whole. Staff weighs numerous competing interests and has developed its own position that it believes is best for all stakeholders involved, including ratifiers and utilities. Staff conducted an independent review of Evergy's rate increase application requests, and this review included an in-depth examination of Evergy's finances, which allows staff to evaluate the application for accuracy and for compliance with Kansas law and commission regulations, identify any positive or negative impacts on customers, the utility, and the public generally, determine the costs the utility is entitled to recover under the law from its customers, evaluate the structure of the utility's rates to ensure they are fair and are based on the underlying cost to serve customers. Staff's role is not to help one party over the other, but rather to provide independent assistance to the commissioners in balancing competing interests and evaluating the total impact of the application on the public. Here is information about staff's testimony, and please feel free to take a photo. The last several months, staff has been working on this case, devoting most of their days, nights, and evenings analyzing the Evergy's application. Staff filed a comprehensive analysis of our position in the form of testimony on June 6. You can access staff's testimony by going to the commission website, the See Commission Activity tab, then go to the Docket Files tab and enter the document. We encourage you to read through the case documents and keep up with the proceedings. As highlighted earlier tonight, in summary, Evergy's request is a base rate increase of a little more than $196 million, a 10.5% return on equity, a capital structure of about 52% equity and 48% debt, and pilot programs and cost trackers. Staff filed hundreds of pages of analysis from recognized experts in public utility ratemaking. In short, staff recommends a 5.38% increase in Evergy Kansas Central's electric rates. Over $100 million in staff recommendation increase is tied directly to the recovery of capital expenditure. Evergy is already made to improve the safety and reliability of its electric service. Staff recommended a lower ROE and capital structure than Evergy. Staff also recommends Evergy be required to track any margin revenues it receives from serving Panasonic in between rate cases, preserving these benefits for customers. And lastly, staff urges Evergy to pass through the nuclear PTC benefit to customers as soon as the necessary guidance is received from the IRS through a line item credit in my customer bills. And the remaining deadlines in this document are shown on this screen. Under the schedule, you will notice that the public comment period will end at 5:00 p.m. on July 14. So you must submit your comments by July 14 at 5:00 p.m. We want to leave you with information tonight on how you can submit a public comment in this case and follow it on our website. First, you can make a comment here tonight following these presentations. Second, you can also make a comment through the KCC website set forth in the slide. You go to Access Your Opinion Matters tab over on the right. You scroll down to the section titled Public Hearing on Evergy's Rate Increase Request. Underneath that section, there's a link at which you can submit a written comment in the circle in red on the bottom. Thank you for coming out tonight, and we look forward to your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Hurley. Thank you to all of our presenters. We are now going to start the question and answer session of tonight's program. And I do want to emphasize, this is an opportunity for anybody in attendance to ask questions of the presenters, meaning Evergy, Kansas Corporation Commission staff, and Curb, to help better understand the Evergy proposal and the process that the other presenters might go through to look at that proposal. This is separate from the second part of tonight's public hearing, which is the the official public comment opportunity, and that will follow the question and answer session. So if you wish to make a formal comment for the three commissioners to consider in this case, please save that for later in the evening when I ask for the public comments. Now, for for Q and A. Oh, also, if you are attending in person tonight and you do want to make a public comment later in the second part of the program, please be sure to sign up with our public affairs staff in the lobby if you haven't already. That signup signup sheet is just out there. That's the list that I will be calling names from. For those in the room, if you wish to now ask a question during the question and answer session, please simply form a line at the microphone in the middle of the room. For those participating on Zoom and wishing to ask a question, you can use the raise hand feature, and I will call on you in the order that I see your hands online. And if you are not familiar with the Zoom platform, that raise hand feature can be accessed under the Reactions tab. You just go there, and then you will find the opportunity to raise your hand. And we will just alternate as much as possible or as needed from Zoom to those here in the room to get as many questions answered as we can. So again, for those in the room, if you have a question, not a public comment, go ahead and make your way to the microphone.
Go ahead.
Even my question is for Evergy, who showed us one slide with a metric where Evergy seems to be doing very well about the amount of cost increase over the past couple of years. If you go back to that slide and instead were to plot the actual cost of electricity, how would Evergy compare to surrounding states? Is in particular, is the cost of electricity lower in Nebraska, in Missouri, in Oklahoma, and so on?
So this is Darren Ives with Evergy. Thanks for the question. You're right, the the slide that we advanced talks about the the change and the pace of change in our rates since 2017. And we have managed that very well over that timeframe. If you move it to look at the comparative states on an average rate, and maybe the maybe the way I would look at it is on an average residential bill, we would be in the median to just below the median on an average bill with our surrounding states, and we'd be in the median to just above median on an average rate at the residential level.
All right. I am going to go to Zoom for the next. So for those in the room, just hold your thought. Nancy Stark, I think I saw your hand first. If you can unmute, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Nancy Stark. I'm a senior citizen in Lawrence, Kansas. My question is, do I have the facts right that Evergy made a promise to close the coal plant in 2021? And it was supposed to be no more coal being burned there mostly by December 2023 and certainly by 2024? And my question is twofold. One, do I have that timeline right? And number two, why have you decided to renege on that promise?
Yes, so again, this is Darren Ives with Evergy. Thanks for the question. We did not make a promise to stop burning coal at Lawrence in that timeframe. We began to evaluate the potential for the ceasing of burning coal at Lawrence, predicated on a number of factors, which, you know, some included the the amount of load and the need for the energy and generation from Lawrence at the time. Also, kind of the view of the environmental landscape and the requirements that may have been required to continue to burn coal at Lawrence at that time. We always indicated that we would continue to evaluate the potential for utilization of those resources and our other facilities. the potential for utilization of those resources and our other facilities. We have continued to do that and have extended those timeframes out, partly because we are seeing economic development and growth in Kansas. So we have an opportunity to bring new customers on, and we have a need for the energy and capacity from Lawrence, partly because the environmental requirements that would have resulted in additional investments at those facilities to operate them are no longer in place. So we don't have the same cost pressure for continued operation that we did when we first started looking.
All right, we will go to our next question here in the room. If you would please introduce yourself before your question.
I have Kent Rowe, Wichita, Kansas, and of course, I have another question on your affordability, reliability, sustainability claim. And you claim also that you kept your rates very low. This is because you've kept the dirty energy going on, and you've not modernized the grid. When I see those other states and I read about what they're doing in MISO, PJM, Duke Energy, they're modernizing their grid, they're cleaning it up. You're keeping this bad, high, low cost, at least on the books, energy sources, and you're continuing on with thermal plants. Can you explain how that adds up economically and fits the paradigm of the affordability and reliability?
Yeah, thanks for the question, Darren Ives again with Evergy. I would look at it a little bit differently. If you look at the evolution of our generation fleet since 2005, you'll see that we've reduced carbon dioxide in our footprint by over 50%. We've reduced nitrogen oxide by 98%, sulfur dioxide by 90%. So we've made substantial improvements in the environmental impact of our fleet and on our production of electricity. That said, we continue to look not only at the environmental aspects, but at the affordability aspects and the reliability of our system. And when we balance all of those, we continue to employ kind of an all-of-the-above strategy. So we utilize our existing resources, we've added a lot of wind to our footprint. We've got an application in for approval for utility-scale solar in Kansas right now. So and we still have, you know, a high-functioning, well-operating nuclear facility in Kansas. So we're really utilizing all of our resources to kind of balance those outcomes.
All right, I'm gonna go to Zoom for our next question. Joy Mapes?
Hello, my name is Joy Mapes. I'm from Lawrence, Kansas. I have another question for Evergy. So what is the proposed percent rate increase? Because it sounds to me like Curb recommended a 0% increase. The Corporation Commission recommended 5.3%. How much is Evergy wanting to increase? And then also, what is that going towards? Because it sounds like the reliability was only going to be 50% of what you were going to spend that on. So what's the other 50%?
Thanks for the question, Darren Ives with Evergy. Our increase, which I think was in the slide materials that we went through, but just to restate it for folks, it's an increase to current rates, all-in rates of about 8.6% at our original ask. And you're right, the other parties have recently filed their cases, and I think all of them are somewhere in the 5-plus percent range for those that have put out a full recommendation at this stage. So not uncommon at this stage of the process to have differing opinions on a number of topics that, you know, we will all continue to put our evidence in the case for to ultimately put in front of the commission later this fall. You're correct, Mr. Claude mentioned that of our increase, about half of it is to address infrastructure investments that are supporting reliability. The other half of it, we also incur, you know, an annual level of expenses beyond those infrastructure investments, whether that be for labor cost or employee benefits or maintenance expenses on our facilities that aren't capital. We true all of those up at the same time when we come in for a rate review in front of the commission. And then we mentioned that, and the other parties mentioned it too, there are components for cost of capital, the funds we pay those that invest in our company to make the investments. We have amounts in there for that as well.
All right, we're gonna go for our next question. We'll go here in the room. And please, again, just introduce yourself before you ask your question.
Hi, my name is Paige Rogatz. I'm from Wichita. My question is about the Stay Connected program. Could you guys give us a good overview of what the program is and who it helps? And also, what the proposed changes by Curb would be?
Yeah, thanks for the question. At a high level, it's a program that will be available to a few thousand of our customers at the size that we've proposed it. And it provides ability for people to stay current on their bills when they're having difficulty making their full payments. So it's a cash amount that would be available to offset some of their current monthly bill and help them stay caught up with their electricity and not fall behind and not get to a point to face disconnection. It has some income-based characteristics, you know, like 200% above the poverty level would be a threshold for folks that would participate. And I think you asked about conditions that Curb might have put on all that. Joseph, talk to that.
Hello, yes. Oh, mine, I think mine's on. Can you hear me? There we go. Thank you. Yes, thank you for the question. So our testimony regarding that Stay Connected program was supportive of the program and its attempts to provide bill assistance for some of our more vulnerable customers. And so in regards to our recommendations, we made a number of them. The first was regarding the program budget and what that was being allocated for. So initially, Evergy is including administrative costs that go towards running the program, filing the applications, and setting all that up. And so we recommended that the company not include that in rates, but rather have that absorbed by the company itself so that the budget that's allocated to this program can be fully utilized for bill credits to assist ratepayers. The next was helping to kind of get some clarification and shoring up the written language inside the tariff about what standard is being used for qualifications based on what kind of metrics they're using. And so I just want some clarification there. But on top of that, though, was discussing kind of the targeting of this program. That is, what demographic and what level of financial hardship are we looking to address in order to not only provide a good use of those credits, but to also see what kind of impact these kind of programs have on reducing disconnections and missed payments? And to the utility side, what kind of impacts it may have on bad debt expenses, which are uncollectible amounts from customers who are disconnected that are spread amongst all customers? And so to Curb, this is an opportunity to get some good information and some real-time data regarding these types of programs to assist customers like that. And then the final one, I believe I'm calling it correctly from memory here, was utilization and promotion of Evergy's average bill pay system, where they take a look at the last 12 months of a person's bill, and they create an average number that kind of helps stabilize utility bill charges throughout the year, which in theory should help with budgeting and those kind of concerns. And so we recommended either promotion of that program or also talking about utilizing its criteria or requirements in order to help people take advantage of those kind of benefits.
I might just, Chair, I might just add that we do have some folks here. If you're interested in the more details on that program, that you could talk to you on a break or afterwards and go into some more specifics on that program, too. We have a very similar program that we've operated in Missouri for a few years that has been pretty beneficial to customers in Missouri.
All right, there are no more hands online, so we'll keep going with here in the room. If you'll just please introduce yourself.
Joni Harris, Kichai. Question I have is two years ago, you put in for a rate increase. Now you're back again for another rate increase. It feels like piecing and parting is happening. In addition, it was shared during the state legislative season with energy committees. Energy's, Evergy is looking at the potential of five new natural gas power plants, reducing their focus on solar and wind, potential second nuclear power plant, that there's a potential of five major energy-consuming companies that are planning to come to the Kansas area that will be supplied by this electrical. So how do you justify piecing and parting and not giving a full context of what is actually being looked at as Evergy is looking towards the future? And secondarily, how much, what is the percentage of increase of people who cannot keep up with these rate increases and are needing assistance to pay their electrical bills?
Thanks for the question, Darren Ives with Evergy. A few questions there. I'll try and remember them, but if not, we can go back through them. In terms of piecing and parting, a lot of that is the process of how rate regulation works in jurisdictions like ours. We are not able to come in and ask for a rate adjustment unless we have spent the dollars and incurred the cost. So even if we have a plan or we have a perspective, we can't come in and do a long-range plan to address all of that in one shot. And so the alternative is, in order to not fall too far behind and, you know, have too many shortfalls at the company, we need to come in periodically and adjust our rates as we're incurring those increased costs, either for investments in the system or because we're facing inflationary costs on expenses like everybody else. You are correct. We do have some investments. We actually have some investments in front of this commission where we have requested approval to start construction on two natural gas-fired facilities. And as I mentioned earlier, also a utility-scale solar facility. So I wouldn't say that we are shifting our focus from solar or wind. If you look at our long-term planning, integration, integrated resource plan, so what we intend to put in place to supply electricity over the next 15 or 20 years, it will show that we have a need for some additional wind, some additional solar, and some additional natural gas to meet the needs of Kansas. And we have a plan laid out that we update annually, file in front of the commission, and talk through with stakeholders as to what that plan looks like.
So what is the increase percentage? As you continue to raise rates, what is the percentage of people that are needing additional assistance because they can't keep up with the rate increases?
I don't have, I don't have that information available at a jurisdictional level. You know, we certainly have some folks out in the lobby that might be able to help talk about that. We continue to have, you know, a number of avenues to connect folks with resources. And we work with customers, you know, daily to try and keep them in touch with resources that are available. But I don't have that percentage.
Thank you.
All right, I am gonna go back to Zoom. We have a question from Lloyd Colston.
Thank you for the opportunity to ask the question. Before I pass up the question with this statement from Art City, thank you for Evergy employees this weekend who did yeoman's work getting the power back on for us. And thank your employees down here. Just do it. My question, I'm confused because you're saying you're going to raise rates. I remember $13 and some, but I heard that you're not going to raise them for residential customers. I'm confused about that. I am want some clarification. And if you are raising rates for everybody, let me champion the thought that you remember that 100% of your customers involve about 20% of the population in Cali County who are elderly or disabled. Thank you.
Thanks for joining by Zoom, and first, thank you for the comment on the hard work of our employees. You know, our folks that work in our power plants and work on our distribution and transmission lines are kind of the core of our business. And they demonstrate the best of Evergy every time they're out there working directly with employees. So we'll be sure and pass that along. On the residential rate increase, our initial application request, about a $13 a month increase on the average residential customer, kind of average usage residential customer in Central. I think where you might have heard no increase for residential is when Mr. Astrap for Curb gave his comments. He said they were proposing no change to the fixed charge of the residential bill. And that would be one component of the bill. But overall, we would have an increase that would be at or in our proposal, just slightly above the system average increase that we've asked for.
All right, we're gonna go back to the room now. Although, before we ask the next question, I just want to do a quick check on time. We are about 12 minutes out from 7 o'clock. I'm hoping we can start moving to the second part of the program, the public comment period at 7 o'clock. So just be mindful. And if you have a question that you think the folks in the lobby might be able to handle, that's a good opportunity as well. So we will go to our next question here in line.
Yes, my name is Kim Gish and I'm from Bel Air. So Evergy recorded about $878 million in adjusted earnings last year. And it's a similar question as others has asked too. How do you justly ask people that are on social security or on a fixed income to be able to absorb that in the upcoming years? You said you have some resources, but when you have several people on social security and several people that make under the $80,000 here in Wichita, you can't be able to have that many programs for that many people.
Thanks for being here tonight. That's a really hard question to answer, right? Mr. Claude mentioned it. We know that, you know, an increase at any level is difficult for customers to absorb and certainly difficult when customers are facing increases across kind of all facets of their life. That said, we face those same increases. We have to pay the increased cost of the goods and services that we buy that go into the service that we provide. We have to pay for the cost of materials that go into the investments that support the reliability of the system for customers. So we work through that balancing. As I've talked about, to try and make sure we're getting the most reliability for the most affordable costs that we can. But it's not, it's not a zero-cost option for us either. You know, we do, we do make earnings. We are a for-profit company, and those earnings in part pay our shareholders and debt investors for the funds that they give to make the investments. We also put about 70% of all the cash we receive from customers back into the investments that we're making in future years. So a lot of those dollars, you know, turn right back to the future investments that go into the system.
All right, I'm gonna turn back to Zoom for our next question. Ron Niegel? All right, I'm going to turn back to Zoom for our next question. Ron Nagel. Mr. Deagle, if you can hit the unmute button.
Yes, this is Ron Nagel from Wichita. And the, I'm interested in what portion of the proposed rate increase that goes back to the investors? How much of that rate increase in the dollar and cents answer will go to the investors?
Thanks for the question. I, I would say it this way. It's a little bit up in the air. I think what you saw tonight in the presentations is that each of the parties that gave a presentation tonight had a different value and a different view of, of what that return to the investor should look like. So that will likely be one of the things that will be settled later in the case or be decided by the commission based on the evidence that comes in front of them. That said, if you looked at our application in and of itself, the, the change in the return level would be a little over twenty percent of the hundred and ninety-six million dollars. So about forty million dollars of the increase would be based on the, the return that we've requested.
All right, we'll go here in the room for the next question.
My name is Rebecca Armstrong. I have a couple. The needs of Kansas, are they data centers? This one. Are they data centers? Do you, the needs of Kansas, are they to supply energy for data centers? You said we need, this is for the needs of Kansas, and I'm wondering if it's data centers that you're fulfilling.
Yeah, I, I was just waiting to see if you had a, you know, an additional question.
I, I'll leave that and then if there's time, because there's not a lot of time.
Yeah, so that, that there are actually no costs in this request related to the service for data centers. There are, there are data centers inquiring in Kansas, just like in states all across the country, for the potential to take service. And, and we are certainly talking to folks, but, but we have not put any investments in front of customers to, to serve data centers at this point.
And so my next question is the maintenance.
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're just gonna do one question apiece for now, since we have limited time. We're gonna go online for our next question. I hope I'm, I'm getting your name right. Anthony Turrock.
Yep, sorry about that. I couldn't get my button to click. So my question is, you talked about investment and you're asking the Kansas tax or Kansas people to pay a thirteen percent increase or thirteen dollar increase in their, in their monthly bills. How much of this hundred and ninety-six million dollars is, is Evergy actually putting back into these investments? So you asked me to put in thirteen dollars. How much do you put in there?
Yeah, thanks for the question. I alluded to it earlier, but about seventy percent of the, the funds that we receive from customers, funds from operations is the term that the finance people would use, gets turned back to future investments in the system. The, the remainder, most of it goes to dividends as part of the return to our shareholders. But over the course of a five-year planning cycle, that seventy percent equates to about nine billion dollars that turns around and gets reinvested back in the system.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to our next question here in the room.
Isadora Avett here in Wichita. And I understand because of the complexity of this whole hearing process, eight-year cycle is rather reasonable for whole process thing to go on. But considering hitting this citizenry with eight percent at one shot is really hard. I expect that KG and Evergy is going to be sitting kind of flush when all of a sudden they get that kind of boost in here. Has any thought been given to scaling that out to ramping it up over, say, the next eight years? So that individually, we see maybe a one percent per year? We live day by day. This would be a lot easier for people.
Yeah, thanks for the, thanks for the question on that. I, I think I'd make two points. The first, you know, I mentioned that the, the impact on customer rates since 2017 has been about one percent a year. So we have managed to do that for a number of years, even as over these last few, few years, we all know there have been much higher inflationary pressures that, that we've all faced. As we start to, to add some of these, these reliability investments and some of this work, it is, it's going to be difficult for us to maintain that one percent. But, but, you know, even at a, at an eight percent, if that happens every two or three years, that's a, that's an annual increase right around the level of inflation.
All right, we don't have any on Zoom now, so we'll just stay here in the room for the next question.
Good evening. I'm Jim Jansen from Newton. From what I gather, Wolf Creek Nuclear Power Plant is still online. How many more years of service is anticipated from that power plant?
Yeah, thanks for being here. Wolf Creek is online. Wolf Creek came online for us in nineteen eighty-five, so it's been on for about forty years now. We have an approved license extension that, that gives it twenty more years from there. So it run out to twenty forty-five. And there are some nuclear facilities that have started looking at an additional twenty-year extension, taking them to a total of eighty. We, we have not made that filing yet, but we'll be continuing to look at whether Wolf Creek could, could run for that type of timeframe as well. It's been a fantastic operating facility for us over its life.
All right, we'll stay here in the room for the next question.
I'm Jennifer Connolly, and I was looking up something online, and you know, it's not always accurate. So I just want to ask, it says, a chairman, president, and chief executive officer of Evergy, David A. Campbell, made seven million, two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars in compensation. How long was that period of time that that compensation happened? And is that accurate information?
It, it is accurate depending on the context. So you're, you're right. It's, it's a little bit difficult to unwind executive compensation like that. They call that his annual compensation in a proxy report. But, but about eighty percent of that, eighty-five percent of that is at risk, which it means he has to meet and the company has to meet performance standards in order for him to get any or, or all of that eighty percent. So it's not like a base salary that just comes in a check every two weeks. And a lot of it requires those targets to be met over like a, a, a three-year period. So he won't even have the opportunity to, to, to achieve most of that eighty percent unless he, we all do well over three years of operating performance for Evergy.
Now, what is his, I know this is second question, but what is his annual wage?
Annual wage is about fifteen percent of that number. So it's probably about, I think it's listed in the proxy at about one million dollars.
All right, we are at, at seven o'clock, but we've just got a couple of people left. As long as the line doesn't get longer, let's, let's try to get everybody's questions answered. So go ahead.
Okay, hi, this is Lori Lawrence, and I am from Wichita. I just have a question since it looks like in 2024, Evergy brought in eight hundred and seventy-eight million dollars and paid out almost six hundred million to shareholders. That leaves a lot of money that your CEO also said that you had a solid year. Why, most businesses, you do capital outlay from the profits that they make rather than asking, they don't have anybody that they can ask to pay for it like you do. Why is that money not being able to be used to pay for this? What you're asking for, the hundred and ninety-six point four million dollars? That covers it, doesn't it?
Yeah, so thanks for the question. I, I mentioned this a little bit earlier, but we, we certainly have some, some, some requirements to pay our shareholders and our, our debt investors for the funds that, that we get. The only profit that we make as a regulated electric utility is the amount of return that the commission approves toward investments that we have already made and invested, which is the, a part of this, this request for these new investments as well. That's just the way the rate regulator process works. But as I mentioned, the funds that we get from revenues from customers, about seventy percent of those are turned around and put back into future investments. And over the five-year period that's coming up, that's expected to be nine billion dollars that will be used to fund the investments based on the revenues that customers will be paying us already.
Does that nine billion include the cost of your two gas plants that you're going to put in?
Not yet, because we haven't started construction on those yet.
All right, and staying here in the room for our last question.
Bruce Young, Walton, Kansas. And this is probably off subject, but it's bugging me to death. You talked about twenty, twenty-seven percent price increa- increase CPI from two seven, two thousand seventeen to current. In Marion County, we've got Orsted, which is a wind farm, making presentations to landowners out there. For a certain cost per megawatt hour, they'll pay the farmer for that over a ten-year period, so much per year. But there is nothing in the contract that allows for CPI increase or energy cost increases. If I look at their contract, I end up owing them money at the end of the process. And this is ridiculous. You guys sat here and talked about twenty-seven percent increase, and the farmers up north are providing land for wind turbines, and they're getting screwed.
Well, thanks for being here. I, I can't answer a question on a wind farm. We're, we're not affiliated with that and not, not a part of those contracts. And, and you know, the, the level of inflation that we cited is, is just the level of annual kind of traditional CPI inflation as a comparative. So, but, but, but I understand your comment.
All right, we have reached the end of all of our questions. I don't see any more hands on Zoom or here in the room. So we're at seven oh four. I want to give everybody a brief 10-minute break. Take a restroom break. You can talk to any of the representatives out in the lobby if you've got additional questions. But we are going to start back with the official public comment session at seven fifteen in this room. So we will be, we are in recess now to re, restart at seven fifteen. Thank you. So we will be we are in recess now to re restart at seven fifteen. Thank you. Everybody will move back into the auditorium and find your seats. Sorry. All right, we are now reconvening the public hearing, and we are now starting the official public comment section of this hearing. This is an important step in our evaluation process, and we look forward to hearing your comments. We the commissioners cannot engage in dialogue with you during this proceeding. However, it is possible we may ask questions for clarification. To ensure that anyone wishing to ask or wishing to make a comment has the opportunity to speak, please know that I will be limiting comments to three minutes. And if you're on the Zoom feed, you will notice a timer on the screen to help you keep track of time. When that timer reaches zero, an alarm will sound, and your microphone will be muted, and we'll move on to the next commenter. Just note that three minutes can go faster than you realize, so please be prepared to be succinct and ready to speak when called upon. Once you are called on, please begin by stating your name and the city or county in which you reside, as your comments are being recorded and will be part of the official commission record. If you're participating on Zoom, you'll need to unmute after I call your name. And and for everyone, please do refrain from any inappropriate language or disruptive behavior, as that will result us in us silencing the microphone. The commission considers this a valuable opportunity for us to hear directly from Kansans about Evergy's proposal, and we appreciate your cooperation to make sure this goes as smoothly as possible. Please either approach the podium as I call your name, or if you are participating on Zoom, you could use the raise hand feature now if you wish to make a comment. Also, in addition to the comments that we will hear live tonight, the commission is accepting written comments on our website at kcc.k s.gov as as was explained in staff's presentation, and we can put that slide up at the end of the the proceeding. So you can see again how to make those comments. You may also mail your comments to the commission's Office of Public Affairs at fifteen hundred Southwest Arrowhead Road in Topeka or by phone at one eight hundred six six two zero zero two seven. Public comments will be accepted until Friday, July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five at five P M. The comments submitted will be part of the official record and will carry the same weight as comments made tonight. And and if you do have lengthy comments, as I mentioned, we'll have a three-minute limit. You have lengthy comments. It may be best to submit those in writing through one of the forms that I just mentioned. So again, as I as I list names, please come to the microphone or unmute on Zoom and state your name and city and county you live in, and then give us your comment. So we will begin with the first name I have here in the room, and it is Carl Peter John.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Carl Peter John from Sedgwick County, Wichita. I have provided written comments, so I will make this relatively brief. But I am concerned that keeping the electrical grid up in the Evergy service area needs to be factored into this rate hearing. And I believe that this has historically been overlooked and should be a metric measured and included in these public hearings. Once upon a time, I was an elected official as Sedgwick County Commissioner. And as part of my responsibilities in that regard, I had concerns about the challenges, both natural and man-made, to our electrical grid. At that time, I privately raised concerns with utility staff, albeit it was West Star, and about an extended grid down event. And I was not alone about those concerns then or now. Ted Koppel's book Lights Out two thousand thirteen was published. The problem is not new. This is an area where neither the government bodies, and I'm looking at the federal side FERC, or utilities, have focused, I believe, enough attention and resources. And we need to make sure that electrical grid failure must be prevented. The K C C should look at establishing metrics that penalize and or provide rewards for electric service performance within the rate structure. My concern is an extended and widespread blackout grid failure could be catastrophic in Sedgwick County as well as the rest of the Evergy service area. And of course, obviously, this has the potential not only to cover the rest of the entire eastern grid area or and or the entire country. And I don't know whether if we had it down for a couple of days or a couple of weeks, or at what point it becomes catastro- cascading and catastrophic, but the consequences would be dire. Now, Evergy financials are strong. This indicates this proposed race, I I believe, should be delayed until performance metrics tied to service performance are included and expanded metrics are included in this race setting process. Having the rhetoric of reliability is one thing. But what gets measured is how the performance occurs. So I'd like to thank you for your attention and time. I'd be happy to take any questions at an appropriate point. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Peter John. We will next go on to Zoom. Joy Mapes.
Hi, this is Joy Mapes, Lawrence, Kansas, Douglas County. I oppose the rate increase that Evergy has requested. They've requested more than Curb or the Kansas Corporation Commission has suggested. And only fifty percent of the money from the rate increase would go to reliability, repairing what is failing. Out of the other fifty percent, twenty percent is going to go directly to shareholders, who it sounds like are are ma- already making plenty of profit. The CEO is making at least a million dollars and stands to make up to seven million dollars if they meet their metrics. I'm guessing this rate increase is part of their metrics. We are, as consumers, struggling with price increases across daily necessities, medical care, you know, the cost of housing. I don't understand how we can be expected to absorb a rate increase so that Evergy can continue to make profit, that it will pass on to its leadership and its shareholders. And the assistance program, which I don't fully understand, because I don't think it was fully explained. If that's supposed to be some kind of balm for people who are going to be hit the hardest by this, it's not going to be big enough. The Evergy representative said that it would take care of maybe a few thousand people a year, and if Evergy serves over seven hundred thousand people in this area, that's such a tiny percentage. And we've talked about people on fixed incomes, disability, you know, social security. More people are going to need that assistance if this rate increase goes through, so I I think it's unnecessary. I think it's irresponsible. That those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mapes. Next comment in the room would be from Jennifer Connolly. Don't see Jennifer Connolly. Oh, oh, here we go.
Okay, I I want to talk about the elephant in the room. It's not this rate increase. It's going to be the next one, and it's going to be much, much larger if something happens. And that is, there was a bill passed, S B ninety-eight, on the very last day of the very last legislative session. And that bill was pushed through with Evergy and other people that seem to benefit from this bill passing. I don't know what kind of palms were greased, but I thought it's a pretty nasty thing. Now, what I want to explain, which I didn't know till recently, there's a a a company called Red Wolf Properties that is going to massively benefit from this if this goes through. And basically, what they are is a company that rents rents out colocation sites. Now, if you don't know what a colocation site is, it's basically you rent space, data center space, which would be your servers and all your equipment from this colocation site. And that colocation site gets a tax. They don't have to pay sales tax. Well, that is really great, but most of the money comes from other states. The only thing that they'll have to pay is basically the money that they get from co-locating their data center. The money from Amazon and all the other companies that go to places where they don't have to pay any corporate tax will not be coming here because they they come all over the the place where they don't have to pay any corporate tax. Now, if Kansas is willing to give them corporate tax too on top of that, that's going to cost us a lot of money. This data center, let me look at this on my notes here. Uh, Redwig Properties to build a data center complex in Kansas City, Kansas, takes up five hundred and forty acres, occupying one million nine hundred and eighty thousand feet and consists of six connecting buildings. This will be a colocation site, and information about who's going colocate is not disclosed. My guess, it will be companies like Tesla, Microsoft, Cisco, Amazon, and that they have headquarters in states that don't have to pay corporate taxes. So the money that will come in from this will only be for hosting these large companies. It will be a twelve billion dollar project, which is brings in, it will use between three hundred and sixty to six hundred megawatts of electricity, equivalent to one-third to half of the residential households in all of Kansas. They will need heating, air conditioning, specials, engineers, electricians to run and maintain the data center. I would guess no more than two hundred employees for each center, yet we couldn't we would we wouldn't even get enough regulation in Cedric County to get a solar farm that farmers wanted because they would not benefit from Evergy.
All right, we are now at time. Thank you. All right, we will now go to Zoom for our next comment. Nancy Stark.
Hi, Nancy Stark, Lawrence, Douglas County. I'm a retired psychiatric nurse practitioner, and in my long years of work with patients, one thing I learned is that people's behavior doesn't change if there aren't consequences for their actions. So what I would like to recommend to the commission and to curb is that instead of rewarding Evergy for reneging on their promises, that you find them. And I think you should find them thirteen dollars a month for each of the seven hundred thousand residents that they quote-quote serve until they close that coal plant. They won't change their behavior if there are no consequences to ignoring what they promised to do. And I would like to see the state of Kansas people who taxpayers and citizens like me elect stand up to the power of a corporation. It's not just, I didn't hear any talk about sustainability. It's not just the health risks to the people close to that coal plant that are at stake. It's the whole environment. And Donald Trump may think drill baby drill is a good idea, but I will tell you the citizens and everybody who lives in Kansas does not think coal plants are a good idea. So I would like to see you guys who have the regulatory power to give Evergy some consequences, actually give them some consequences.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Stark. We will go to our next commenter here in the room, and that is Kent Rowe.
Hello, I'm Kent Rowe, Sedgwick County, Wichita. And I would like to thank the men and women of Evergy who actually keep the lines off and the good work that that goes on. However, addressing the However, addressing the management of Evergy, since I began addressing this regulatory body in nineteen seventy-nine against the Wolf Creek Power Plant, there is at least ten more percent more water vapor in the atmosphere due to the combustion of fossil fuels. The Wolf Creek Power Station remains online pumping coolant water around highly toxic and useless spent fuel rods for the next twenty-four thousand, twenty-five thousand years. What time is it now? It's past time for this monopoly to display some of the amount, some amount of corporate social responsibility. Power purchase agreements are vitally necessary for this state. Kansas is one of only six other states, mainly in the South, that prohibits power purchase agreements. Although data centers and gas-fired generating installation designs call for less water usage, they failed to account the immense amount of water required to maintain feedstock into their facilities. Fracking of wells, cleaning of pipelines, dehydration, glycol recovery, maintaining emergency firefighting reservoirs are all part of the real water expenditures. Air-cooled condensers are not without technical and physical drawbacks. Air-cooled condensers Annual Conference in twenty twenty-four spell out a wide variety of operation reliability difficulties. Aside from noise, light, traffic, and air pollution, Evergy must reexamine their choice of power generation. Indent energy examples, the tribes seem to point to load-following peaker plants with trigeneration. Their use of renewables is extensive, lower cost, and available. Released a recent article, New Frameworks for Renewable Energy. We're not in Kansas anymore. Published by Smart Energy Decisions in August twenty twenty-two, transmits a growing opposition to anything but oil and gas for our nation's energy needs. Despite empirical evidence that renewables are cleaner, cheaper, and smarter and generate far more jobs, certain segments of Evergy continue to blather fossil fuel dark fairy tales. It seems that the reasoning is based on cognitive unidirectional power flow in one single relay of our nervous system. That is, there is a lack of robustness and brain redundancy, which is tripped out of section. Result of the dark billionaires' dark money has an overcurrent polarizing potential to influence a culture of make-believe. Due to continuing burning of fossil fuels, the planet has far surpassed CO2 levels, of which oceans are eighty feet higher, eighty feet higher than they are now. I understand that knowledge incongruent preconceived notions induces harmonic destruction during our thought processes. Thank you, and I hope to speak to you all again last I meet my maker while switching on a faulty breaker.
Thank you for your comment. We're going to go next to Zoom and Anthony Turok. And just for planning purposes, our next commenter in the room will be Bruce Young. So you can start making your way up, but Mr. Turok online.
Yes, thank you. This is Anthony Turok from Manhattan. I understand that there's always a need for improvement, forward planning, desires to provide services. But I don't understand the constant need for increases. Every two to three years, Evergy comes back and says, hey, we got to increase rates again. I mean, there's got to be, at some point, a means to say, what are you doing for us other than give me more money? Right? I think that the uses of average billing is very good. I use it, and I use it because I don't know from winter to summer what it's going to cost to run my utilities. So that's a great benefit to me because I do get a benefit knowing that I have pretty much a stable rating rate throughout the year. So I appreciate that. But asking for more money every two to three years, that just means that my two, two hundred and fifty-three dollar a month bill jumps up to two hundred and seventy-seven hundred dollars a month. That's that's not at all any way to help me survive because we have to have these energy utilities to survive. It seems to me that if we need programs to help those that can't afford to use the, to keep their electricity on, there is a problem. There is a serious problem as to how the rate increases are keeping the low-income families suffering, mid-income families suffering, and the only people that really don't suffer too much are the the one percenters. I think that there's got to be a different way to cut, to improve for improvements, for plannings, and for a desire to provide service other than rate increases. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Turok. We will go to Bruce Young next.
I was going to pass, but then I listened to the gentleman and thought, maybe I better make a statement here. If you're in the farming business, just like Evergy, nothing goes down in price. You have got to increase your prices to keep up with inflationary processes. However, we do not need a twenty-seven trillion dollar debt in this United States. So let's address the real root cause and try and get the big, beautiful tax cut slashed.
Thank you, Mr. Young. We're going to go to Michael Brosh on Zoom. And just for planning purposes, the next commenter in the room will be Shirley Nelson. Mr. Brosh, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
We can hear you loud and clear.
Good evening, Commissioner, staff, Curb, and concerned Evergy customers. I am Mike Brosh, and I'm pleased to be here to present some insights into the Evergy rate case as a volunteer on behalf of AARP. AARP is concerned with the financial impact of essential utility services upon its members who often face challenges in dealing with unavoidable cost increases while living on largely fixed incomes. By way of background, I am retired after serving for decades as a president of Utilitech, a utility regulation consulting firm based in the Kansas City area. I've testified in more than one hundred and eighty formal rate case proceedings around the country, including several proceedings involving Evergy entities. I have reviewed the Evergy rate case filing and have identified several key issues that were outlined in AARP's filed comments dated April eighteenth. These included concerns about inadequate cost control and overstated equity ratio, an excessive requested return on equity increase, understated sales volumes and revenues, and concerns about the proposed new Stay Connected Bill Assistance Program. More recently, I've reviewed much of the staff Curb and intervenor testimony filed this month and have noted that most of the issues that were raised in AARP's April submission have now been addressed in responsive testimony. My comments this evening are meant to add AARP's perspective to the current state of the record on certain of these more important issues. I've registered to appear again next Monday in the Topeka Public Hearings to present the other half of AARP's comments. First, I would note that Evergy's current earnings and financial performance remain strong at present rate levels. In its first quarter twenty twenty-five investor relations supplemental data, Evergy reported that its first quarter twenty twenty-five net income from EKC operations was one hundred and ten point nine million, an amount nearly equal to the first quarter twenty twenty-four net income of one hundred and eleven million. These stable financial results tend to undermine the credibility of assertions that yet another large Kansas rate increase is immediately necessary. The recent staff and Curb testimony filed in this case recommends significant reductions to Evergy's proposed overall revenue increase, but even these recommendations seem to be excessive and tend to reward the company for its failure to rigorously control costs. Next, AARP noted in its written comments that Evergy and other electric utilities experienced both favorable and unfavorable changes in costs and revenues. But Evergy's rate case filing tends to emphasize only the rapid recovery of rising costs while not quantifying load and revenue growth. With respect to load growth, I'm pleased to see that staff is recommending tracking within regulatory liability for the substantial load and revenue growth now expected from commercial operation of the Panasonic facility in DeSoto. This approach will capture deferred profit margins from service to Panasonic so that ratepayers ultimately participate in the benefits from load growth. This is an essential balancing of favorable changes that help to offset rising costs and is a proposal that should be approved by the commission. In the interest of time, I will reserve my further comments for the Monday evening session in Topeka. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll look forward to hearing the rest in Topeka. We will go to our next commenter here in the room, Shirley Nelson. And following that, we'll have Frank McCollum.
I don't have a whole lot to say. I've really learned a lot listening to all this stuff tonight, but I am retired. Husband and I are retired and live on an acreage. We are limited to our social security and what the government is giving us, and they're threatening to take some of that away. And I don't know what we do, where do we dig first for money to pay the additional Evergy bill? We just can't handle it.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Nelson. Mr. Frank McCollum, and then following him will be Bill Newton.
I'm Frank McCollum from Greenwood County, Kansas. They put a new transmission line across my property in the last two years, and I was shocked at how much money they spent putting this transmission line up. They cut down a good tower, sort of a hundred years old, made out of galvanized steel. Don't have any kind of wear in it tall. And they come back and put up a steel tower that are completely rusty right now, rusty. You know, and the rust has come down to the cement that they can host in the brand-new cement. But my concern is that the old towers were in the ground six feet. And cement down with stainless steel metal. And these new towers are sitting on top of the ground with no metal at all going into the ground to hold them there. They dug a hole and put cement wire around the outside and then did any bother by taking that metal and pushing the cement wire away from the hole with this, just shoved it in there and put two, two loads of cement in that hole, wet cement. And then they took a dry cement, which was pre-made someplace else with the bolts sticking out, with no rebar sticking out of it, and topped that wet cement and leveled it up. And that was the whole of that tower for the next fifty or hundred years with no rebar in it. And I asked the people, why, why can't you don't have a rebar in it? They says, rebar is old-fashioned. Cement nowadays don't be rebarred. I said, don't you remember that Kansas City, where that balcony fell down, killed all the people? But they didn't put a rebar in that. They just kind of looked at me and chuckled, you know? But they did this for a malerated turn down the hell tuna. And we had fourteen holes in our property, and we leased. And so I went down, walked every hole, every hole was the same, and every hole was the same. I said, there's no way in world that tower, one hundred and ten feet in tall, can stand there. Because wet cement, dry cement will not bond. I mean, we all know that basement. We all know that, that anything about cement, it will not bond. If you don't put rebar, a dry cement, stick it in the wet cement, there's nothing to the bonded. And so I don't know, who drew up these blueprints and why they wasted millions of dollars knocking down these good towers? Because it was the, the, the insulators passed on to these old towers. Them holds a perfect round, because I measured what the tape measure, I wanted, there's no oblong hole in any other. They would last another hundred years, but they just put new insulators up and new wire. But they did, they knocked them down, cut them up. I got ten of them on my property right now. If anybody wants to look at them, it's, yeah, a perfect shape they were. I kept ten of them. And, you know, and I dragged them off and took a height, look at them. I want to put in museums someday. I just can't understand who drew that plan up and do something that stupid. I mean, it's stupid. Because the wet cement would not bond dry cement. I think anybody here in construction can tell you that. And that's all they did. No rebar, finish it before. Just stuck that on top, that wet cement and leveled it up, and then put that tower on top there and bolted it down. I don't know why they didn't leave the old towers there. Yeah, I thought they were going to put a piece of a two-inch pipe through in the ground and fast that tower to a two-inch pipe, but they did nothing, just stuck that wet cement in there and put that dry cement on top of it and bolted it down. It wouldn't last fifty years. But the rust in them towers are already coming down and making holes in that brand-new cement. It's only a year old.
All right. Thank you. We appreciate the comment. We've got Bill Newton next, and then following Mr. Newton will have Holger Meyer.
Thank you, Bill Newton from Valley Center, Kansas. Appreciate you all being here and giving us the opportunity to sound off. I'm going to take a little different perspective, probably than what most folks have done. The KCC started off by saying that they're here promoting the best interest for Kansas. And so with that in mind, here would be the best interest for Kansas. And that would be to have deregulated energy. And I don't expect Evergy to stand up and say, yeah, we'd like to go from a regulated to deregulated because their profits, they wouldn't be competitive. And the way I know that they're not competitive is Spirit decided to leave Kansas, and they came, Evergy came back crawling and saying, okay, no, don't leave, don't leave, we'll lower the rate. So your comments earlier, and by the way, I've been in the energy business, either owning energy companies or working for a utility company, Kansas Power Line, for forty years. So my perspective is, is kind of, it's leaning towards free enterprise and the customers and what the KCC said about the best interest for Kansas. Your comments about the one percent increase for the last four years. I think full disclosure would go a little bit further than that and would say, when Evergy bought West Star, they negotiated a fee so they didn't have to raise any rates for, what was that? Four or five years, something like that? So your, your, your comments were based upon that. And if you go back before that, I contacted Evergy and asked for twenty years previous, and they wouldn't give it to me, so I went to the KCC and I got it. If you take out those four years that Evergy first bought West Star, it was seven point six eight percent increase per year for residential, and commercial was somewhere between four and a half and six percent increase per year. So full disclosure, kind of, it's, it's one of those things, undressing the king. I, so, tell me this, do you believe that Evergy should spend money on advertising to the citizens that are paying the rates for any reason other than emergencies? They're spending a lot of dollars, so there's a lot of confliction with the media outfits out here. They, when, when they get millions of dollars from Evergy and you want to go promote something else like free enterprise for energy, it's silent. So there's a confliction there. I think I'm going to end with probably one last thing. And that, that is this. Evergy Energy Solutions, I don't know whether Evergy has paid for that out of money that they've gotten from a deregulated energy, from a, from a regulated entity to go deregulated to compete against free enterprise. And if they've done that, we need to fix that. One last statement, and that is Evergy customer service talked to somebody that I teed up for them on a solar business, and they recommended that to that customer that they get solar, a solar bid from Evergy. Uh huh. So there's confliction. Final statement, we need to doge this, KCC needs to doge Evergy, Evergy, and so does Curb. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Newton. All right, Holger Meyer and it looks like Lori Lawrence is the next name I have. All right.
Good evening. My name is Holger Meyer. I oppose, largely oppose the increase that Evergy is requesting. The reason is that it seems to me they are engaging in wasteful practices, and I would like them to first be less wasteful with the assets they have before asking for further increases. Over the last year, more than ninety percent of the new installed electric generating capacity worldwide was renewable energy, largely wind and solar. Those more than ninety percent generating capacity actually generated about eighty-five percent of the energy. So only fifteen percent of the energy from newly installed sources was from fossil fuel or other thermal generating stations. That's because renewable energy is less expensive than non-renewable energy. It has been for several years now, and the disparity is becoming larger and larger. It is wasteful to propose to build gas-fired power plants. There are battery grid-scale batteries that are coming online and that have been operating in some cases for years around the world. So grid stability used to be quoted as a reason why we need gas plants, and that just is just no longer true. So we can operate at least upward of ninety percent renewable. So we can operate at least upward of 90% renewable grid and we don't need wasteful spending on gas plants that run on carbon dioxide emitting fuel with volatile pricing and then predictable future expenses. When we have wind and solar, not incurring any fuel charges, very predictable pricing that is getting lower and lower every year. So I would like to, you know, take inspiration on the executive compensation model that was discussed earlier. I think maybe an increase by a dollar or something to address the most urgent reliability issues. Anything beyond that, I would first like to see the metrics that Evergy surpass the global average of more than 85% newly installed supply from renewable sources. That's how I would engage it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Lori Lawrence and then I will have Isadora Abbott.
Hi, Lori Lawrence from here in Wichita. One of the biggest problems with how we do our energy supply in Kansas is the regional monopoly issue that we are all faced with. This lets Evergy, as we saw on the map, control half of our state and we have no other options. The regional monopoly system needs to be disbanded. Kansas Corporation Commission, I'm speaking to you. Legislators that might be in the room, I'm speaking to you. If we have a competitive rate system in our state, in our city, we would see lower rates because there would be competition. Please consider changing the way we do this. And I don't know if it's the commission. I'm guessing it's the legislature that has to do that. But that really needs to happen. This is not only here, but it's all across the state. If we can make that change, I think we all here in this room will see a difference in our rates.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. Isadora Abbott followed by Jane Burns.
Isadora Abbott, Wichita, Sedgwick County. The bulk of my comments are on the gas-fired and fossil fuel usage. So if you can assure me that we will have a hearing opportunity on that, I can relinquish my time for that event.
Sorry. Say again. I can give you a clarification if you would like.
Yes, if I have, if you can assure me that we will have a public hearing on the fossil fuel and gas-fired projects, I will keep my comments for that time and relinquish now.
We've already had a public hearing on the two plants that were discussed earlier. To the extent there are additional investments planned, I would expect there will be more public hearings on those.
Okay. Well, since I disconnected myself from you a couple of years ago, I don't care what you do with your rates.
All right. Jane Burns and followed by, I think it's Levante William.
Thank you for coming to Wichita. Thank you, Curb, and thank you, KCC, for your impressive analyses of the costs involved here. I would like to confirm that those would be more appropriate increases, especially having heard the salary, the exorbitant salary, the high cost that some retirees are paying and the guaranteed payments to shareholders. One suggestion, instead of building, one massive suggestion, instead of building new facilities, is to invest in conservation. That is, for the fellow who is paying $253 a month in electricity can certainly conserve considerably. And Evergy would be well advised to invest in how that person and plenty of other folks can not use the energy that you're generating. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Levante William, you can correct me if I've said that wrong. And then for planning purposes, the next will be Charles Merrifield.
Levanta Williams, Wichita. For Evergy, I think I can tell you a way to save some of your money. You can stop putting up what the governor called, and I quote, "big ass pole" in the city of Wichita. The poles have been nothing but a nuisance and now there will be some that will go along what we call our Red Bud Trail. And I will tell you, I have asked that something be put on those poles that graffiti could not be put on. There should be something to prohibit our young people from putting graffiti on those. And so when something happens and one group of kids put graffiti here and another one there and then they mark on each other's, you're going to have problems. You're going to have problems because of the graffiti. So who wants to ride a bike or walk along the path that is full of graffiti? Again, as you look at the rate that you want, when I was city council, I was always concerned about our kids and my elders. As we talk about our young people, I taught in a school for 35 years that was probably the lowest income school in the city, but I never told my kids that. But there are kids in that community that have utilities cut off on a regular basis, on a regular basis, could not wash the gym clothes because there's no water, could not do this, could not do that homework. All of those are really something that young people look at. I would hate for this increase to interfere with a family that is trying to move forward and trying to show their kids something on the other side. And then you come to the aging. I sit on the Council of Aging and I sit on the AARP board. Thanks to my colleague for giving you some statistics that AARP fills. I have a concern because you're putting pressure on the seniors of our community. Many of you are sitting in high places. You don't have to worry about a $13 raise. I'm sure you sit and say, oh, we're asking for is $13. But you don't understand what $13 is doing to some others. For my aging, are they going to get a raise in their social security? Are you going to social security to ask for a raise for them? Or their retirement benefits? Are you going to ask for a raise for them for that? So they can pay their bills? So that they can live? And every day now, I'm seeing people die in my community, leaving one person to manage the household. How does that work? Please think about what you're doing, how it affects others, and I hope you haven't already made up your mind.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Charles Merrifield followed by Dulce Palma.
My name is Charles Merrifield. I live in Wichita, Kansas. And I'm probably, would be considered to be an investor. And one of the things that I have invested in over the years is oil and gas. And I have several interests in wells in Oklahoma. And so I can say oil and gas has been good to me. However, I do not believe that oil and gas is the future of electricity. And I think that we need to move away from oil and gas to a more renewable sources of energy that don't pollute the environment, that don't increase the temperature of the earth, which will lead to all sorts of other problems. So that's basically my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Merrifield. Dulce Palma, I'll let you correct me on the pronunciation there. And then the next commenter will be Joni Harris.
Good evening. I'm Dulce Palma. I work at the Salvation Army here in Wichita and we serve Sedgwick County. At our facility, we probably see around 4,500 individuals per year. So those are some of the more vulnerable populations that have been spoken about this evening. I do want to mention that Evergy provides information and options for families regarding their bill and some of the struggles that they may have and some things that they can do with that. They have a presence at our different service days and many of our distributions, they come to provide that information to families. Evergy also donates fans every year for those populations that we serve so that they may offset some of their bill with cooling options and reduce their overall rate for that. And then they've been partnering with us weekly for a utility education class. We've been seeing between 25 and 45 families each and every week and Evergy is there to provide options for their bills, resources and referrals for program assistance that they provide as well as other things in the community. And then speaking of the Stay Connected program, that could benefit some of the families that we've been talking about with the lower income, the aging populations, some of the more vulnerable populations in our community. And that could help alleviate some of the pressure to those families and enrolled customers in that would be less likely to be disconnected. And then finally, Stay Connected would expand support for customers facing those hardships in some of the populations that we serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Joni Harris and then following Ms. Harris will be Kristy Salter.
Joni Harris, Key Chai, Sedgwick County. I'd like to speak to the graph that Evergy used to justify why they need this rate increase. Those types of graphs are used, and I call them comparable justification. So they're looking at other states, how much they're charging and, oh, look, Kansas rates are so low. But that's out of context. We aren't comparing apples to apples. The context is different in every state and why certain rates are at certain rates. So I don't feel that that should be used as a reason why you need a rate hike. Secondly, many taxing agencies, many service agencies now are using the tagline, it's only going to cost $13 a month. But there's many people throughout the community and the state of Kansas. Evergy wants $13. Water rates need this much money. This city taxing jurisdiction needs this money. The county needs this much money. Our incomes are not going up at the same rate that everybody wants more money. And everybody has to live with the money that they've been given. And so it puts more, you're creating a domino effect of so many people need help. And as rates for everything continue to go up, more and more people need help. And then you've got to keep spreading that across those who are paying so that you can help those who can't actually pay the rates that they're being put upon and burdened more and more and more. This is very concerning. I understand rates have gone up. The cost of things have gone up. That's the reality that we're all living in. But all of us have to make hard decisions on what we can pay for and what we can't pay for, what companies can ask for, what taxing agencies can ask for, because you can't just keep taking more and more and more. You've got to streamline your operations. You've got to bring true justification as to why you need more and more money for what you're offering in a service. So I truly hope that the commission will take this under consideration. Because justification of why they're asking for this money needs to truly benefit and serve the community because it's a service offered to people that I ask Evergy to actually prove why you really and truly need all of this rate increase ongoing, knowing there's huge investments to come for your future plans and that we'll all be reasonable and all be realistic. And it's time to stop the massive spending that's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristy Salter followed by Rebecca Armstrong. Do we have Kristy Salter? All right. Rebecca Armstrong?
I'm Rebecca Armstrong from Bel Air. And in 1980, the bottom 90% made $30,000 a year. In 2022, the bottom 90% made 41, almost 41,000. The top 1% made almost, well, $785,000. The top 0.1% made $2,817,000. We're worried about the investors, right? Yeah. The bottom 20% over, from 1980 to 2020, made, increased by 31%. The top 0.1% by 832%. The top 1% by 574%. And we're worried about those investors. And so we need to increase what we're charging our customers so our investors and our CEOs are making enough money. 85% of Americans are underwater on their cars, 85%. We have homeless everywhere. And this is America, one of the richest countries in the world. It's not rich for most people. You claim sustainability, affordability and reliability. An increase of $13.05 to many people is a lot of money. Asking them, telling them, oh, we'll help them. We've got paperwork. Come fill out this paperwork. We'll help you. That is so demeaning. That's not a way to solve this problem. And it's not okay. We put in solar panels that cost us $16,000 a few years ago. It took a bit for Evergy to come over. Okay at all, but $16,000, our bill is now $9, $10 every month. You're increasing somebody's bill by $13 a month. It would really be nice to see the kind of program where more people had solar panels on their roof. More sustainable actions, more availability, affordability, instead of worry about the investors. And we can do that. We just have to change how we're thinking about it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Krista Wallen followed by Keith Newfeld. We have Krista Wallen. All right. Keith Newfeld.
Keith Newfeld, Inman, Kansas. I would like to address the commissioners. I don't fault Evergy for asking for a price increase to help do business. That I don't have. I like my electricity. I like to be able to plug in my TV and whatever else. The problem I have is one thing, and that's competition. The problem I have is one thing, and that's competition. Evergy has no competition in Inman, Kansas. I have to plug into Evergy. And I, that's, that's all right. I chose to live there, but I don't know very many places where you can have uh, a choice of who you buy your electricity from. And so I find fault with the 20% of my residential bill, which would be $2.70 that goes to basically the stock market or the investors. So they can return, I think it's somewhere between 8 and 10% on their investment. So would like, uh, all the rest of us. Uh, let them, let Evergy sell yourself. That'll sell you, get you investors. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Paige Ragatz, followed by Joy Dara. Paige Ragatz. All right, Joy Dara. Okay, we're gonna keep going down the list. Jason Marowski? There we go, got one.
Hello, uh, how you guys doing? My name's Jason Marowski, uh, Wichita, Sedgwick County. Um, I want to thank you, uh, for all the work you guys have done here recently with the storms by either getting the power on or keeping the power on. I just want to give you guys kudos for that. Sometimes, sometimes you have to lick your finger and stick it in the air to see which way the wind blows. Over 60% of the recent school bond issues failed during the recent votes across Kansas because taxpayers in Kansas are just being tired of being nickled and dying to death. We're just tired of it. I fully understand that there is, uh, are increases in cost and it's a part of the process of doing business these days. I believe that small increases are easier to absorb over a period of time than a major 8% increase in September. Just baby steps. I'm really wor- worried about our elderly population not being able to, uh, pay these Evergy increases. They're on a fixed income. They already have to pay extra because of property taxes, food costs, gas and et cetera. And I will end with this. I would like an application to become one of the Evergy investors. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next on my list, and actually this is last on my list. So if, if there are others in the, the crowd that wish to speak, get prepared now. Uh, Mindy Felcher? Mindy Felcher? All right. I don't see anyone popping up. So, um, I am at the end of my list, but I want to make sure that anybody that, uh, is sitting there and would like to make a comment has the opportunity. Uh, so if you've not had an opportunity, go ahead and come to the microphone now.
Yes, I forgot to make a certain point. Social Security.
Can you, uh, say your
My name is Rebecca Armstrong from Bel Air. Social Security gave me a raise, 3.25%. My, that was what I got. What do you guys want?
All right, are there any others in the audience, or I'm also looking at Zoom for hands? Uh, are there any others that wish to make a public comment before we conclude? Okay, uh, not seeing any additional hands or folks popping up. I do want to remind everyone that the public comment period does still remain open until 5:00 PM on, uh, is it June 14th or July 14th?
July.
July 14th. That was a mistake. July 14th of this year. Um, if we can, please put up the slide on how to post public comments so the crowd can see that. Also, there is an evidentiary hearing in this matter scheduled to begin in Topeka, uh, in the commission's first floor hearing room on July 21st, 2025 at 9:00 AM. And it's scheduled to end July 25th of that week. And the commission must issue our decision by September 29th. This concludes the public hearing. Thank you for joining us. We're now adjourned.